Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us at the Pickerington Local School District Board Candidate Town Hall Meeting hosted by PEA and PSSA. I'm Brad Harris. I am the PEA President. Before we go ahead and get started, I just want to recognize some elected officials that we have in the crowd. And let me know if I miss anybody, but I do know we have Kathy Olshewski, a school board member.
Hi.
We have Martin Tinson, school board member. We have Lori Sanders, Biotownship Trustee. And then I believe we also not elected, but we do also have our superintendent and attendants, Dr. Paul. So again, the purpose of this is to let the community know about, obviously, the upcoming election and to give them an opportunity to hear from our candidates as far as their views on things. We do have seven school board candidates that are running. They all did get an invite. Obviously, we have four attendants today. And I will also share, this will be posted on YouTube, so we are videotaping this, so we will post this on YouTube so that people can see this through social media. And also want to let you know that PEA will also be doing our private screening later on this week, and then after that, we will actually be offering an endorsement of candidates. If you are interested in seeing that candidate, there is a signup sheet you can register for in the front, and there'll also be a link on the YouTube page. The way the format here is going to work is we do have some set questions we're going to ask in the first hour. We did have an option for community members and people in attendance to ask questions, so we are collecting those. If you still have questions that you are submitting, you can submit them over to the side. So while we're asking questions, they'll get those together, and then the last half will be questions that you, the community, has asked. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Joey. She'll introduce herself, and she will ask the first question.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Joey Moore, and I have the honor of serving as the Pickerington Support Staff Association. Something you may hear from us is ESPs. That stands for Education Support Professionals. And I guess I will start with the first question. I will say each of our candidates will have three minutes to answer. I have these handy cards here when you have one minute left, or thirty. Oh, okay, I won't do that. Or thirty seconds. So, but first, what we will start off with, three minutes for each of you guys to go ahead and introduce yourself, and we'll go from there. Introduce yourself and decide, why did you decide to run for the Pickerington Local School District Board of Education? And Brooke, we'll start with you.
Just to be, like, I'm leaning in, or I'm just talking, the microphone is picking me up? My name is Brooke LaGrasso. I am a teacher. I teach in Columbus City Schools. I love education. I love teaching. And having a teacher on the school board just makes sense. I know how to speak to teachers. I know how to speak to staff members, and I understand how education works. When I say this is a part of who I am, public education, being a teacher, is in my DNA. This is a life sentence for me. I would love nothing more than to serve this community on this school board and help to protect public education in this community. And I'll just end it there. There's lots of time to talk with questions, so, thanks.
Okay, Toby.
Good evening. My name is Toby Sodorsky. I'm proud to call Pickerington home. My wife Shayna and I have been here since 2014 and have four children, à la Brady Roman, or I would say some of you had the pleasure of meeting. Like many of you, I want the best for our kids, and that's why I decided to run for the school board. I believe our schools should be focused on students first by keeping class sizes manageable, ensuring teachers have the resources they need, and spending every taxpayer dollar responsibly. I also want to rebuild the trust and strengthen the communication between the board, the teachers, the families in our community, so that decisions are made openly in the best interest of everybody. To be honest, I'm not a politician. I'm a parent, a neighbor, and someone who cares deeply about the future of this community. Together, we can make our schools remain a place where every child has the opportunity to succeed. Thank you for being here tonight, and I look forward to earning your support.
Okay, Charles Newman, same question.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. Charles Newman, and I am a proud Pickerington alumni. I graduated at North in 2006, the husband of a wonderful Pickerington Local School employee at Central High School, and the father of five amazing sons. I hope they're amazing to all of their teachers out there. That's the goal when they leave the house every morning. But my reason for running, as I sit in this seat, and as I've said in this district, as I've sat in, you know, this performing arts center, I believe that it takes different perspectives to be able to, be able to lead our district into where we need to be. And so I look at that. My perspective has changed from when it was a student, from a parent, to now as being the husband of a staff member. And I believe that our district is in need of folks who have a perspective that is connected to the reality of where we are and who we are as a district. I know the promise of our district firsthand. I am a proud alumni, you know, have been blessed to do many things, and I just want to serve our community, our staff, our teachers, but most of all, our students to continue to have a great experience.
Thank you. Okay, Ryan Holstein.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Holstein. Seeking election to the Board of Education for Pickerington. My family have resided in Pickerington for eighteen years. We have three kids in the district. I have a sophomore here at North, and I have a seventh grader and eighth grader over at Lakeview. I'm actively engaged in our community. I currently serve on the Fairfield County Adam H. Board, on the Biotownship Zoning Commission, and I've worked in all levels of government throughout my career. Professionally, I'm an IT project manager, which is a fancy way of saying I manage big budgets and upgrade servers and databases. But my expertise in that leads me to delivering things on time and well within budget. I'm pursuing a position on the Board of Education because I'm deeply invested in our community. I believe that a fresh perspective is necessary for the board to fully realize its potential. I want to advocate for securing additional funding to support not only daily operations but infrastructure expansion, which I think will benefit everybody. Additionally, I'm committed to rebuilding the trust between the Board of Education, our community, and our staff members. I think that the combination of my professional background and my extensive involvement in the community would be assets to the Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you. Toby, we're going to start with you on the second question, and then just follow, and then we'll end with you. What roles do you think education support professionals play in a Pickerington Local School District student's education?
I believe the role for the member of the Board of Education should be to advocate for students, advocate for teachers, and advocate for the community. Everybody needs to be on the same page. The issue with the current board we have right now is not everybody's on the same page. And the teachers made that clear when they had a vote of no confidence to the board. Granted, now half, more than half the board is up for election, so now it's time to make that change. And I believe I would be the best person with children in the schools as I'm, I do it with teachers in three different buildings right now, four, it'll be four buildings in two years, but I have a strong relationship with the teachers that my children have. I've had strong relationships with our new superintendent. I've had him a couple times, and I've actually known Charlie since he was up in Euclid, where I lived up in northeast Ohio. But we need, a board member needs to have this relationship with the community, someone who's out there. We, the current board, there's two people that are out in the community. There's three that we never hear from or see. We need to be out in the community. We need to be in the schools. We need to be seeing people. And not sitting behind a microphone and saying the word "no" and changing the whole perspective of what our next year is going to be.
Thank you. Same question. Do you need me to reread it? Are you good?
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. What roles do you think education support professionals play in a PLSD student's education?
So, as the husband of a proud education support professional, everything, but I'll say this, I think they are the overlooked heroes in all of our buildings. And I say that as watching firsthand, my personal relationship, here at North, you don't graduate North back when I went through and not know at least a carload. Those are the people that met you at the bus, that gave you a smile, that give you that value, that credibility. So that way, when you go into the classroom, the teacher doesn't have to tear walls down. They already have students who are ready to learn. And I think they are, you know, they're the rock of our schools. They're the lunch ladies, the janitors, the duties, the paraprofessionals that are aiding our teachers. What I really saw, and I'll say, when I saw what they mean to our district, a couple of years ago, when we had the incident at Ridgeview, and it was unfortunate, and the school had to be evacuated, and it was a scary time, and everybody had to go to Central, and students were being released, we didn't know how they were going to do it. It made me proud, one, to see my wife out there, but to see her coworkers who were support staff as teachers were in the building, making sure students were where they were supposed to be, running the evacuation plan to a T that had been sitting down within a thirty minutes. And that right there showed that they knew the relationship, they knew parents, they knew kids. They are the peanut butter and teachers on a jelly in this district, and you can't just have a jelly sandwich. You gotta have good peanut butter. So, to me, I think they play an influential role in every student that walks into our door because they are the first hello and sometimes the last goodbye that our students get.
So I guess my question is, what don't support staff do? They do everything. I mean, it's not just your defined role or what's on your actual job description. We plug and play our support staff across a variety of roles throughout the district. Everything from, hey, can you go help out in this classroom? Can you go help out with the buses? The cafeteria needs someone. Can you pop in there for a few minutes? We're short-staffed in the front office. Can you come in here just for a few minutes? It's, everything is just little clips of time here and there. So our support staff are vital, but it doesn't stop there. The relationships they build with our kids are paramount. I know my middle daughter, she runs track over there at Lakeview, and her track coach, she's support staff. And yet, every day, I get a new update on what Ms. Wilson's doing. Track's not in season. Ms. Wilson takes her time every day to come out, seek out my daughter, ask her how her day is, ask her what she can do to help her. She's one of the first people to build her up. She also keeps her in line, which she's the middle child. That's desperately needed, okay? But that's what I hear every day is something about Ms. Wilson, every day. That's what support staff is. Our kids recognize it. Our kids need them. They're vital. This isn't just getting into a classroom and learning the basics or being able to pass the test. Those things are very important. Our support staff, they fill in all the gaps. And those gaps, they happen every day. And every day, from what I hear, it's a different gap. So that's what support staff do for our schools, and that's why they're important.
Thank you. Brooke? Do you want me to repeat the question?
Okay, thank you. Such wonderful answers. I am a teacher myself. I'm a special education teacher, so I can personally attest how important support staff is, not just in the classroom, but in all kinds of capacities throughout the building. And a common complaint, it is, that they are over-leveraged and undercompensated. And it's really dismaying to see because of building, when it's understaffed with people, the burden kind of tends to fall with support staff because they're seen as more flexible or more movable. And then we start to see some really uncomfortable things happening to support staff and them being put in roles that they necessarily don't need to be put in or shouldn't be put in. But oh my gosh, I have so many stories of the support staff that have supported my kids. Are you kidding me? Oh my goodness. Our son Harry had a surgery, his senior ear, and required all kinds of support to get around North. Support staff was there, loving on him and taking care of him. Our, the bus drivers, the custo, I mean, support staff is so important. And it's not just the teachers. As was mentioned, it's not just the teachers that have impact on children. It's support staff as well. So I really hope that our district finds itself in a position, in a more stable financial position, where we can really show our support staff what they're worth and treat them as professionals because they are professionals. Hence the term paraprofessional, and it would be wonderful to treat them as such. And we love you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was told to remind, to reiterate that the police speak in the mic for those in the back there.
Is that me? I'm sorry.
No, I think, yeah, just across the board. All right. So we are starting with Charles with this question. What do you view as the district's most urgent priorities or needs? We're asking you to list at least the top two, and how do you plan to address the priorities that you have identified?
So I think it's no secret that our top urgency right now is that we have to get a levy to be able to fund operations of our district. And so, you know, levy is a word that people don't like, but guess what? Unfortunately, right now, in the state of Ohio, the way funding is, and in order to keep the level of education that we want in Pickerington and that we deserve, not just want, deserve, and need, we're going to have to do that. And so, priority is going to be that as this board, whoever is elected, come January, is going to have to hit the ground running and making sure that this community is ready to put forth the need. The second priority is, I think we have to continue our identity within trust and the culture of trust across the board. It's an exciting time in our district. We have a new superintendent that's on board, who's hit the ground running. We will have new board members, and I think it is a moment of refresh, you know, awareness amongst all of us. And so it's a time to build relationships, it's a time to really pull our boots up and see what does this community need to see from the folks that are on this side of the table and, you know, in our classrooms to make this district move forward. People want us to remain the district that they know we have been, that they know we can be, and I think it's time for us to kind of really laser point and focus, what are our true needs? How, what will get our teachers, our support staff, our community all in alignment to see that this is the North Star that we're going towards and get that taken care of? And I think those two priorities are essential if this district is going to turn around from where we are. And I think this is the perfect season. We have the ingredients to make that happen.
And again, let me know if you need me to repeat the question. Ryan?
I mean, I think Alice said it best, money, money, money. It's what we need. You know, we don't exactly have an impoverished district, but we've been so financially prudent for so long, we backed ourselves into a corner. The money needs are real, whether that's an operational levy, whether we need additional buildings for a bond issue. The financial commitments of this district are real. They're not made up. Anyone who's been in our schools would know that. So on day one, this is our job, if elected, to figure it out. Couple with the fact that there are threats of getting rid of property taxes altogether, and then we have to find out a new way to fund all of our local services, including schools, and it's no different. Is it a combination of a property tax increase and an income tax increase for the school district expenses? I'm not exactly sure what the threshold is, but I can tell you by the end of January, we have to know. We have to get on the ballot in May. We have to be able to make the case to the community what our needs are. And if that's directly correlating, you're giving me money for this, and this is what it's going to, then let's break it down. Let's meet people where they're at. We can't expect everyone to know in the community what's going on in our schools because not everyone has children in our schools. And even those who have children in our schools, they don't know. So we have to make the case. We, as a board, will have to get something passed, and then we have to get the votes. We have to go door to door. We have to convince our community partners that they need to support it and also get out the vote. The need isn't going away, it's only getting worse. And quite frankly, we know it's an uphill battle to get it passed. We already squandered an opportunity here to get something on the ballot in November. If we pass, if we punt past May, we're going to have to make some very, very hard choices. And I don't think that anybody in the community here wants to know what that reality looks like, whether that's curriculum, whether that's staff, whether, I'm not even going to posit anything else. We need money, and that's the top priority of the district. Because if you look out across the district, what we need, whether it's smaller class sizes, whether it's additional instruction space, whether it's modern facilities, it all costs money. Thank you.
And thank you. Brooke?
Excellent points. I, so far, I know that we share the same view that additional funding is needed in this district. Anyone who tells you anything different is being glibly deceitful. It needs to happen. I'm open to discussing any number of ways that that can happen. I would need to collaborate and speak to the treasurer, speak to all kinds of people, and really run through what would be the best way to do this and the most effective way to do this. Also, I think a big part of school members' role, specifically what I would bring to the table, is really educating the public and hope. With this property tax thing that's coming in about a year, year and a half, there is going to be a lot, a lot of talk about eliminating property tax, and there are extremely motivated people who want to see this happen. I can promise you that public education is not going to be a priority to these people. We are going to have to scream and cry to make sure that public education funding remains, well, it used to be a priority, I'm sorry, but that it is a priority when we're making these decisions. So I do think a big part of this role is not only here in Pickerington, but at a state level. Because our frustrations feel like they end at the board. They do not. The major, major problem is down the street in Columbus. We have to rally together to get our state funding situation figured out. Because the burden falling on community members levy after levy after levy is not sustainable and it's not ethical. There are many people in this community who can simply not afford it, and that's not their fault. Education is tremendously expensive. And expect to pay it all with a levy and just everything's going to be great from that point is not realistic. So it's my job, but I hope, to also continue to advocate at the state level that these things need to change, not just here in Pickerington.
Thank you. Toby?
I'm going to go with the same as everybody else. It's all comes down to money. Money is, again, the root of all evil, and that's where we're going to have a problem here. We need money, but we need to also look at spending taxpayer dollars, and we have to ask ourselves the question, how is this improving student learning? Not just wasteful spending of money. How is it going to improve our students? And honestly, spending the money is going to reduce the class sizes, and that is another key priority. These class sizes are getting out of control. And this report card right here is showing that our early literacy is going down because our classes are too big. During COVID, when we had the split classes, there were no discipline issues. Kids were learning. Now we put twenty-eight to twenty-seven to twenty-eight kids in a classroom, behavioral issues. Our report card's going the wrong way. We need to start going up. We went from four and a half stars down to four. We should be going up to five. We should be with the Olin Tangies and all them. We need to reduce the class sizes. And finally, like I've been preaching, we need to regain the trust with the teachers. If we don't build a strong relationship with the teachers, how are they going to support our goal of teaching the students what we ask them to teach? If they don't feel supported, we're going to have issues. We're going to have teachers leaving. I don't know how, five or six principals left last year? Five? Five principals left. That's unheard of, that they're leaving the district. For what? More money and less time. Smaller class sizes. These are things we have to fix. The smaller class sizes have to be done. Thank you.
Well, I think this kind of leads right into our next question. So we'll start with you, Ryan. How do you plan to support any proposed PLSD levy issues?
Any and all options. First, we got to get it on the ballot, so we have to have some thoughtful conversation with our partners about what the need is. I realize that we had two that were up for a vote not too long ago. I'm not even sure that those were adequate to cover what the actual real needs of the district are. So once we can come up with a new resolution, we get it passed, get it on the ballot, we have to work with our community partners. We can't operate in asylum. If we operate in asylum, it's going to fail. That's not just on our staff, it's not just on our families, it's on our community partners. It's on other elected representatives, whether it's in the township or the city. We need their help. We need their support. We need them to buy into that a well-funded school system will benefit everybody in the community. If we fail to fund our schools, it will have a negative impact across the board to everybody, whether you have a child in our district or not. It'll impact our property values, and that doesn't even touch, you know, our kids. We're doing this for them, to give them a leg up on life before they leave for college. I'll knock on doors, I'll make phone calls, I'll do whatever it takes. That's what the job is. It's not simply sitting back at a board meeting, debating a resolution, saying, eh, might be a good idea, sure, and waiting for it to fail. We've done that. It's not how we do business. So it's a call to action. It's a call to action to our parents, to our staff members, to our community, the people who've been here for thirty or forty years. You moved here for a reason, and we all did too. And I bet you the schools were a huge component of that. We got to get the votes. We got to convince people, go door to door, and sell our message. Because the message is reality. We don't have to come up with a fancy advertising campaign. We just got to show them what we're doing in our schools, how many kids are packed into each classrooms, one-way hallways, bathrooms that are utterly inaccessible, lockers that just don't exist for kids. We don't make these things up. That's the reality day to day. I realize we can't invite all of the community into the schools, it's not how things are done anymore, to see what's going on, so we have to sell it. So first, we got to come up with a resolution and pass it, get something on the ballot, and then we have to go to every household, knock on the doors, make the phone calls, send the mailers out, show them what we want to do with the money and how it's going to impact our kids and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Brooke?
I've been out in the community quite a bit, and just to be clear, I've started campaigning for this role in May. That is how important this is to me. I've been doing this for a very long time, and I've had lots of community, talking to people about this levy issue. I think a big, big part of it comes down to trust of the board. I think a lot of people feel disconnected from the school board. They feel as though the school board isn't necessarily acting in their best interest. I have spoken to teachers who have felt completely disregarded by the school board, and then the same school board is going to come to the community with a huge financial ask. That is not going to be a relationship that works if there's going to be a levy or any other kind of method to increase revenue. The only way it's going to happen is if the community feels confident that that money is going to the right place and it is going to be well-managed. Enthusiasm goes a long way. When you have school board members showing up to school events, to clapouts, to first days of school, to performances, it really communicates an eagerness and a trust that is necessary to secure that type of funding. When you are excited and posting things on Facebook and showing up and shouting out teachers and huge, huge kudos to what is going on with the social media that PLSD has been putting out, that is exactly what they're trying to do. This is a community effort. Even if you don't have kids in the school, it is a community effort. It needs to feel like a community effort. There is no way people are going to spend a lot of money on their tax bill if they feel like it's just, oh, and whatever, and they don't, it's just going to whatever. But if they see what it's being used for, they're going to be a lot more excited to open up their wallets and make our schools open up their wallets and make our schools even better. So, I mean, I have a lot of enthusiasm. I have a lot of enthusiasm. It would be a huge part of my job to showcase what an incredible district we have and also showcase the need that is very, very there.
Thank you. Real quick, I got the audience fact checking me. Six, it was six principals that left last year. Just want to let you know that. Go ahead, Toby.
Oh, the levy. Growing, I'll go with a personal story. Growing up back, I'm showing my age in two thousand, when I was a sophomore in high school, our, our school failed a levy for the third straight time. And I saw teachers get fired, I saw extracurriculars cut, I saw buses go away. Growing up in Cleveland, I've never even been to Cleveland, it's cold in the wintertime. It's a long, it's uphill both ways, it's still a walk, and it's cold, and I had to walk to school because we didn't have buses. They completely got rid of buses. Sporting events, we had to pay six, seven hundred dollars back in two thousand to play sports because that was to get a chartered bus to go to sporting events. Our kids do not deserve that. A levy that we pass has to be transparent, it has to show accountability, and it has to be student-focused spending. The community needs to see where every single dollar is going, and if that's what it's going to take going door to door and explaining to them, this is where your money's going, not just, oh, it's going to the operating levy and that's it. We need to show them where every dollar is being spent to get them on board. Because if they're not on board, it's never going to pass.
Thank you. Charles?
So this is interesting. You know, my take on this is, when you look at the levy and how we pass, it is fixing the identity of what our board is. And right now, our board is an elected position, but it's really an elected leadership position. I think that sometimes those that are sitting in this seat right now forget that word leadership. And so when we go and present levies to the community, they don't have leaders out there who sit on the board and go beyond that five o'clock meeting time that are willing to advocate for what this district is. There's no secret. It's four of us up here right now, there's seven people running. There's other folks that could have been here, there's other folks that should have been here. Because if nothing else, just to hear what the community is saying, what teachers are saying outside of a Monday night meeting on what we are, for the simple fact that when you go into their homes, when you go into their neighborhoods and tell them, this is why we need money, you can speak with them and not for them. And in order to get levies passed in this district, this board has to evolve to a board that has a connection with this community. The math is the math. I work in this for the city of Columbus, I know elections. There are going to be more than ten thousand votes cast for this position, and we are having a town hall, which will probably be the only opportunity for our constituents to hear what we are running on, and it's less than five hundred people here. But there are going to be candidates that have two thousand people vote for them, and they didn't care to even show up tonight. And we've been working that those two thousand people are going to make change in this community, and we are no longer that community. We are the community where it takes that people want to know that my yes vote is connected to a commitment, not just in the classroom, but also behind the desk on the Board of Education, with our superintendent, with our chief academic officer, with our support staff, with our unions. And I think in order to get this passed, it is going to take all of us to be visible in our own working, but as a board member, to be what we were elected to be, the face of this district in this community and talk to people. It's called relationship, and let them know why we need this levy. Don't scare them. Don't talk about what we won't have, but talk about what we do have and what we can have if you vote yes.
Thank you. And then the last question for this part of the town hall, start off with Brooke here. How do you plan to address the increasing diversity of our district?
I love this topic because I'm so lucky to have always taught in a very diverse district. I've taught in Detroit, I've taught in Las Vegas, and now I teach here in Columbus City Schools. I love that I work with such a diverse staff. It's fantastic. You learn all kinds of types of things about different people and ways they do things. They learn things the way I do things. I've adopted different things, I've started watching different shows. That sounds silly, but that family community of having a diverse staff is so, so, so important. So I really hope that we can continue to be a district that attracts all different types of people to work here. In my belief, representation matters. It matters a whole lot to children, a whole lot. So when children are able to look at a teacher or a staff member and see their own face reflected back at them, that is powerful. I could tell you a million stories of the visually impaired children that I work with that meet a successful visually impaired adult, and it is just such a wonderful experience. They get, especially a teenager, a teenager who gets to see like a famous YouTuber who's visually impaired, the representation matters. So in our schools, having a diverse staff, embracing it, it's just going to lift children up, and it's just going to help them learn, it's going to help them feel more safe, more at home, it is just beneficial for everybody.
Thank you.
Pickerington's a melting pot. Let's just get it out there right now. It is growing and it's extremely diverse, and that is one of the greatest strengths, that these kids now get to see different cultures up close and in person. For example, my children that go to Pickerington Elementary, for Christmas, they have a, they put on a performance, and we learn about, they learn about different cultures from nine different ethnic backgrounds. That's something I never had as a child. These kids get to see all the different things that they, that these kids get to celebrate and how they celebrate it, not just, all right, here's Christmas and that's it, we're done. So celebrating these cultures in our schools is a huge thing to make these kids feel included, and it helps, honestly, I think it helps the teachers too, because now they know in the future, hey, if I have a kid that celebrates these holidays, this is how we have to handle it. And that's, I think, one of the biggest upsides of this community is how diverse we are.
Thank you. Charles?
It may be a shock to people, but I'm a minority. So, you know, diversity is always big. It's a word we want to talk about. But I look at it and I'll say, Pickerington is growing. I intentionally moved back to Pickerington and put my kids in this district because over thirty years ago, my father, who had the privilege of being a Marine going over this country, over the world, said, I do not want you all to be able to look at just people that look like you. I want you to be able to be relevant and real in this world. But now diversity means so much more than color, and so many times, people make it look like our district has to grow and we just want African-American teachers, the teachers that speak different languages. No, it's about an understanding of experience. And I think when we talk about that diversity, it's how do we make sure that we are, one, recruiting teachers from different experiences, and then, two, making sure that they are okay being who they are in their own experience and learn from one another? Because one thing we don't have to do is recruit diverse residents. They're coming. Students are going to be diverse, not just by color, they're going to be diverse in their educational learning style, from what school they came from, from what sports they play, all of those different things. And I've learned that my children, some of the best teachers that they have right now, they weren't because they were black teachers, they were because they were diverse teachers that could meet them where they were. Everybody's not going to have a Mr. Holland who can rap and do math. But I was blessed that CJ, and if you know CJ, there's two things CJ Newman is going to have. He's going to have a swag and a football. And CJ Newman needed a Mr. Frederick at Pickerington Elementary School to just talk stuff to him, and I mean, literally talk stuff, and told him, you suck at football, but do this math problem. That's diverse. That's diversity. It's about how do we get teachers, and I think we look at this in the lens of color, gender, but it's about, is there someone in our building that can compare their experience to the experience of what our children are going with? And how do we embody that as a lesson? Everybody's not going to be the same, but all of us are the same. We one district, and so when we learn how to lean on one another, that's how we push that diversity. And I must say, as somebody who's fought to fight for diversity in Pickerington, we have come a long way, and I'll let me publicly thank some of you all for what you've done. I tell people, a quiet advocate doesn't mean that he took a break, it just means that you all are doing what you're supposed to do, so I don't have nothing to complain about. And in the area of diversity, we've come a long ways, and we have further ways to come as our Napolit community, as our community of language, English, as a second language community, as our special needs community continues to grow, we have more work to do.
Thank you. Ryan?
So I don't admit this often, but I'm from that state up north. I know, right? There's a downside to everyone, okay? I grew up, I spent most of my formative years outside of Detroit, and then I spent my teen years in Chillicothe. And to tell you that those are two or opposite experiences is an understatement. So, you know, my wife was a Navy brat, so when we got married, we decided where we wanted to live. Pickerington was on the shortlist, but part of it was because of the diversity, and it's only increased. And I think people want to be seen, they want to be validated. We're all different, everyone in this room is different. Doesn't make any of us bad people, we're just different. So how do you, how do you get past that? Talk about it a lot. You guys are with our kids probably more than we are at this point. So when my kid comes home and I'm asking about their new friend they met, you know, school just started, right? Do you know what's never mentioned when I ask them about these new friends or the new people that they meet? I'm lucky to find out what their gender is. I don't know their background, I don't know their religion, I don't know what they look like, I don't know anything like that. My kids, it's never occurred to them that that's something that they should include in a description. So we got to talk to our kids, we got to celebrate the differences. We all live our lives differently. If we're not harming folks, there's no right or wrong way to do it, so we got to learn, we got to ask questions, be inquisitive, don't be judgmental, just ask. One of my first jobs out of college, I worked for Franklin County Department of Job and Family Services. I learned a lot, shall we say? I worked with a population that, quite frankly, I was a part of growing up. But you don't know until you know. And how do you know? You ask questions. And I cannot tell you how many of my coworkers or even my clients who would come in that would give me the grace to, when I say, I have a really dumb question, okay? If you could just help me out here. And everyone was so nice and they would just answer the questions, it wasn't offensive. We communicated, we were collaborative. We sought first to understand before we wanted to be understood. It's a toll game thing, by the way. My kids taught it or learned it, and we embrace it at home. We have to continue the conversations, we have to celebrate the differences, and that includes in our school buildings as well. That's where our kids are seeing us, not just in our neighborhoods. They go to school with these kids. We all celebrate in different ways, we celebrate different holidays. Just communicate, talk to each other. I find it breaks down a lot of barriers. Thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes our first part. I got six forty-five here. I think we're about ready here, but let's take a ten-minute recess here, give you guys a chance to stretch your legs if you got to go to the bathroom or anything else. We'll reconvene at six fifty-five. Thank you.